Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2019, will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Here.
Trustee Dempsey is excused. Clerk Vorba, here. Trustee Dorsevitz?
Here.
Trustee Kermy?
Here.
Treasurer Heisey?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item B is the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have a special birthday celebration. Treasurer Mark Clinton has a big birthday today, so you're going to lead us in the pledge, and I won't tell him how old you are.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is he in his sixties now?
So now, there's only two guys on the board who are still in their 50s. So that's your trivia question for tonight.
And we're taking over.
Approval of the agenda, item C.
Mister Supervisor?
Mister Clerk?
I move for the approval of the agenda Tuesday, March 26, 2019.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is item D, approval of the consent agenda. Any comments or questions by the board?
Quick note on the Fire Department monthly report. Outstanding bills this month, $20,000. That's this month, but we're over $60,000 now. We're outstanding with that $11,000 over six months old. Is that when we start to send it to a collection, or?
Yes, that is when we start to send it to collections, is once it meets over 190 days.
Okay, so that $11,000 will be something to look at. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions on item D? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mister Supervisor?
Mister Heitman?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Item E is public comments and questions, limited to three minutes. This is not your only opportunity during the night to ask comments or questions. There will be another time at the end of the meeting, and we do encourage questions on individual agenda items, as long as they pertain to that item. So at this point, any comments or questions from the public? Okay, we're going to move on to item F, new business. We have a public hearing regarding an industrial development district for the Schoolcraft Business Park. Since this is a public hearing, I need to open the public hearing, and I will need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mister Supervisor?
Mister Heitman?
I move we open the public hearing for the IDD.
A motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. So the public hearing regarding item F1 is... Oh, we need a roll call, yep.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So now, we are in a public hearing regarding item F1 at 7:03 PM. This is a public hearing regarding an application that's been submitted by the township for an industrial development district for the creation of what would be known as the Schoolcraft Business Park. So tonight, we do have Laura Haw here, our planner, and she's going to come up and explain this in a little bit more detail, and then we'll be happy to entertain any comments and questions from the public. Laura?
Evening trustees, thank you. Industrial development districts, commonly known as IDDs, are designated areas of a municipality that offer businesses and opportunity for future tax abatement. Oh, this one. Would you like me to start over?
No.
Go ahead. Start over.
Okay. Industrial development districts, commonly known as IDDs, are designated areas of a municipality that offer businesses and opportunity for future tax abatements. IDDs are recognized by the State of Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, as an incentive for new businesses and existing businesses to make improvements in Michigan. IDDs have been known to encourage companies to build new facilities, expand, and renovate existing facilities. Plymouth Township has utilized IDDs and tax abatements for many years, at least going back to 1982, and there are a number of IDDs currently in the township. This includes the Metro West Technology Park along Halyard, the Gould Industrial Park along General Drive, and the nearby to the proposed IDD tonight, the Metro Plymouth Business Park, which is on Concept Drive just south of the railroad. This proposed IDD is on the southeast corner of Schoolcraft and Hagerty Road, and it's just over 30 acres in size. I'd like to make it clear that the consideration of the IDD is just for the district alone. There's no tax abatement being proposed this evening, and there's no tax abatement being considered. If an application were made in the future, then that would require its own public hearing and notice requirements and review and consideration.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of things. This is not a rezoning of any sort. This is for tax abatement purposes. So even though it has the word "industry" or "industrial" in the name, this is not a rezoning where there is going to be some kind of heavy industry, smokestack belching, noisy type of situation developing there, correct?
Correct. This is not a rezoning, and if you go to the MEDC website, you'll see where it talks about the different uses that are allowed under an IDD, and they specifically allow for high-technology office and design and research uses. Those are encouraged.
Okay.
Not factories, though.
An IDD could encompass a factory in the future. This parcel in particular, that would be under an IDD, is zoned T.A.R., which is the Technology and Research District, and there has not been any application associated with the rezoning.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Can a company that's a technology company be approved for an IFT abatement?
Correct.
It can, okay.
So I have a couple of questions. One is a planning question. Should we consider making all or most of the property that's between Schoolcraft and Plymouth Road and east of Hagerty an industrial development district in the future? Should we just do it and would make a level playing field for developers and property owners who could then attract development? And I don't know, is existing buildings like the former Burrows Building or the Doer Building, are they eligible for being in an industrial development district? They are not currently.
There are two different types of districts that the state recognizes. The first is the IDD, which is for new builds or expansions to existing facilities. The second is a plant rehabilitation district, and that's a separate designation that involves the determination that a building and a property is functionally obsolete by the assessor, and then at that time, improvements can be made and considered under a tax abatement. So in the case of the Burrows or the Doer Building, a plant rehabilitation district may be more appropriate for those areas. In terms of the greater Schoolcraft area, I think that would be something that the township could consider down the road. There are some properties along that stretch that are governed by consent judgments and that may have to be taken into consideration. There's also many parcels on the north side of Schoolcraft Road that may need to be carefully assembled, many different property owners with different interests, and that definitely warrants further consideration by the township, but it's going to take much longer.
Well, I'm thinking especially the area between 275 and Eccles Road. There's a lot of vacant land there. So I think that's something we need to think about in planning. And then the next two items. Number one is, may I have a map? Either send it by email or tell me where to pick it up, of what the current IDDs are, the boundaries?
We don't have an IDD map to date that doesn't exist at the township, at least based on planning's review of our files, the Clerk's Department's review, the Building Department's review. We haven't been able to locate such a map. What we do have is a listing of the current IDDs from the Clerk's office that we could provide and circulate.
That will be a good project for the GIS effort.
So the assessor's office does not have a map either?
Correct. We've checked with all the departments.
The next one, this is for you, Jerry. Those that have tax abatements in these IDDs, formerly were required to provide a report. Are the reports being sent in, and if not, are we reminding them?
Excuse me. Yes, they send in annual reports, and they articulate how many employees they have employed, or whether they've lost employees, or gained employees, or increased manufacturing, and what other things they did to enhance the community, charitable works and stuff like that. And when someone does not send it in after a couple, three months, then we send them a reminder letter.
Okay. Do you have a log that I can come and look that shows who sent in?
Yeah, we have a record of all the letters that come in.
All right. Next, this is for assessing, Kurt, is, do we have, it's related to the log, are we watching these as they roll off? We have many old ones, and after 12 years, they go away. We want to make absolute certain that we are not giving abatements beyond what the contract, the 12 years, indicate.
Yeah, those are monitored by the assessing staff, as well as the Treasurer's office. The latest example was Absopure. We just recently had one of their longtime abatements go away, so that then they go fully back on the tax rules. So that is all monitored between the assessing and treasury.
Okay.
And additionally, last year, remember, we made, we had to do a resolution to remove one because the people vacated. So it is monitored.
All right. If somebody has a document, that's the monitoring document, I'd like to see it, or just tell me where I can come and look at it, that shows what rolled off each year. Somebody must be tracking it in assessing.
Assessing.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? Anybody in the public? Yes, ma'am. Why don't you just, you've got to come up, and we need your name for the record, please.
I'm Ashley Bignan-Zaccaro. I live in Lake Point subdivision. I've got a couple of questions regarding the proposed development. First, I think everyone's aware that we have a traffic problem with respect to the CSX rail yard, so increasing development in that area would cause, I think, at least those living in Lake Point, a lot of heartburn. And so I guess from a planning perspective, is that something that's being addressed? Or how is it being evaluated?
It would be addressed if and when an applicant comes forward with a site plan and a description of what type of business they intend to put at the site.
Has there been any expressed interest in the site?
There's been no site plan submitted by anybody.
So no interest has been expressed?
There is interest in the site. There has been for years, so I mean...
Is there a specific entity?
There are at least two entities that have expressed an interest in this site.
And what, are you allowed to disclose?
No, because of the nature of their business and the confidentiality which we have extended to them, because they are a... It's a very competitive business that they're in.
So my second question is, has that site ever been developed? Is it a former abandoned site, or is it been, it's never been disturbed?
To my knowledge, it's never been disturbed. It's currently undeveloped.
So is there wetlands that you would be impacting as part of the development?
Any applicant would have to do a, at least a Phase 1 environmental assessment, and then would have to obtain a stormwater permit from Wayne County, and also a soil erosion permit from Wayne County before they do any construction at the site.
Okay, so I'm not, I guess I'm not sure in terms of, if township sells it to someone, if there's wetlands there that are being drained and you're constructing, you know, a commercial building there.
There's already a commercial building adjacent to this site, and they have stormwater, a stormwater retention pond. And again, any new development that occurs in the township has to get a stormwater permit from Wayne County.
So would there be a public hearing or anything?
Any plans that are submitted to the township for, like, site plan review would have to go to the Planning Commission. Those are publicly noticed. With respect to stormwater permits, that is all handled administratively by Wayne County.
I'm not in favor of expanding development in that area. There's very few wooded areas in Plymouth Township left, and I've seen a lot of animals being displaced from development.
Let me give you some perspective. That property years ago was Burrows Corporation, and that area employed thousands more than are working there today, and the number of trains 40 years ago was far greater than today. So we have to figure out how to manage it, but that was always an area that was designated industrial and heavy industry for decades.
Sure, but your residential population density wasn't what it is now today.
It was, that was all there before Lake Point. Lake Point came in the late 50s and the 60s, so it was there.
Sure, I'm just saying in general, though, the whole area has expanded.
But that specific area has shrunk. The number of workers in the Plymouth Road-Hagerty Schoolcraft area has shrunk. You know, Burrows had 6,500 people working there at one time on three shifts. So it's a challenge. I understand what you're talking about, but it's always been industrial and heavy industry, even before I-275 came there.
Sure, I live right off Hagerty, and I can tell you, like, the truck, the trucks that go through there are so heavily loaded. I'm concerned that they're being moved. We were trying to fix it.
In fact, there was a very large garbage dump for a long time at the corner of Hagerty and Schoolcraft.
Susan Bondi. I also, of course, live in Lake Point, and years ago, that particular property was looked at very heavily for a Myers, and we fought tooth and nail to get them to turn it down, which we did get them to turn it down, partially because they found out that we were telling them the truth about the trains back then. I really think it does need to be developed. Actually, you know, coming in from Schoolcraft, I think is, you know, I mean, I've lived there for, as I say, 49 years in Lake Point, and coming in from Schoolcraft, it's not a very attractive entrance to our township. And so, you know, hopefully, we will keep that in mind when we're developing it. The one thing I'd like Laura to cover is, you know, you're not changing the zoning, but I'd like to know, again, review again, what types of development or, you know, businesses could actually move in there, or possibly what we might consider. And obviously, she is right. Hagerty is horrendous right now with Bosch and the employees that are at Bosch, okay? I won't even go between Hagerty, between Schoolcraft and Five Mile. It's horrible. So it, the traffic is horrendous, so, you know, that has to be considered with any kind of development there at the corner.
Laura, do you just want to give us a quick summary of what's allowed in a T.A.R. district?
Sure. So as I stated earlier, this is zoned, the T.A.R., Technology and Research District. Kevin Bennett, the township attorney, has the intent section of the zoning ordinance pulled up that I can read. But I would say that, you know, in general, the building that is to the east here of the cul-de-sac, the master automatic, that facility, the cul-de-sac, and then the facility, the 18 acres to the west, which is the vacant land that's wooded, that was all master planned, I think in the 80s, by De Maria, for a similar use. So it's likely that a future user would be similar to master automatic. But the T.A.R. district, the intent of that is to provide for uses which are related to industry and office uses. They have been identified as high-tech uses, provide an environment where high-tech uses and functions such as engineering, design, research and development, optics, computer-assisted design, robotics, control equipment, prototype development, manufacturing, biotechnology, lasers, medical research, materials testing, telecommunications, and related warehousing, storage, limited assembly would be located. It says, "A T.A.R. district is intended to be developed in a campus-type environment with generous landscaping and attractive buildings, where permitted uses will not be negatively impacted by the elements and conditions such as extensive heavy truck traffic commonly found in a traditional industrial district."
Now, Laura, the facility right here that currently exists, that's some kind of metal processing, fabricating facility, right?
Um...
No.
Trustee Heitman, do they make auto, are they part of the auto industry?
Right. Master automatics, yeah.
There are machine companies that make machine parts.
They make transmissions, well, parts that go into transmissions, yeah.
Parts that are laid, CNC.
They've been talking for the last six months about adding another 50 employees and adding to the building, so.
Bob, could you just scroll down south of the railroad tracks on that map, on the Google Earth? So right here, it's not in Google Earth yet, but right here is the Orlicon facility, which deals with industrial metallic powders and stuff like that. And here is just office. This is Comcast. This is other light industrial and R&amp;D stuff, and then this is Burrows.
What is that band up there that's kind of gray? I can't see it.
It's the railroad tracks.
That's the railroad track.
Yeah. This is Lock Performance, which is heavy industry, in my opinion. They rebuild tanks and other military vehicles here. I've toured that facility, and it's definitely heavy, heavy work going on there. This is a dump. This is a garb, you know, it's not a dump.
It's a junkyard.
It's a junkyard. This is a lawn and landscaping operation, storage, more junkyard here.
So if you draw the perimeter, just go around with the red.
Right.
Okay, so that, none of the present junkyard is included?
No, no.
Correct. And that is under a consent judgment?
The junkyard is, yeah, going back, I think, to the 1960s.
What kind of consent judgment, for what?
There was a, back in the 60s, I guess the township, either through rezoning or a new master plan, you know, I wasn't around back then, but they must have put the squeeze on these guys to either move out or not, or conform in some way. They resisted, they sued, they went to court, and they prevailed, and this area is still governed by a consent agreement, I think that goes back to, like, 1967 or '68. Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Very good. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mister Supervisor?
Mister Heitman?
I move we close the public hearing on IDDs.
A motion has been made to close the public hearing by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Then, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed at 7:23. Next is item F2. This is the approval consideration of the industrial development district, which we've just discussed. Any comments or questions by the board?
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-03-26-33, authorizing the establishment of an industrial development district encompassing three parcels of property on Schoolcraft Road at Hagerty to be known as the Schoolcraft Business Park Industrial Development District as defined on the attached resolution documents.
Motion's been made by trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Motion carries.
Good, thank you very much. Next is item 3. This is a Township Park Facility Use Agreement. If it looks familiar to you, it is. This is very similar to what we considered a few weeks ago with the Plymouth Canton Little League. This agreement is a three-way agreement, which involves the township, the Plymouth Canton Little League, and the Greater Canton Youth Baseball Softball Association. The Greater Canton Youth Baseball Association, GCBY, I'm going to try to acronym that correctly, and the Plymouth Canton Little League are both desirous of continuing to use the four baseball diamonds at Township Park. These have been considered to be some of the best baseball diamonds for, in the area, and are in very great demand by both the GCYBSA and the Plymouth Canton Little League. So what this agreement does, it's, this is a two-year agreement, expires at the end of 2020, and it lays out the terms and conditions for both the GCBYA and PCLL to utilize the fields, share the fields, who has priority use, who doesn't have priority use, what times during the year they will be operating there, what times during the week they will be operating there, and then also outlines the community benefits that both organizations will provide or continue to provide for Plymouth Township. This has been reviewed by the attorney, and we do have representatives here tonight of both Plymouth Canton Little League and GCBYA. I believe they are both supportive of this agreement, and that does have the, at least the tentative approval of their respective Board of Directors, and I'm just thrilled that we're able to work this out, and always remember that we're trying to do the right thing for the kids and make sure that they continue to love and enjoy the game of baseball, and that we also understand for our benefit, because these are certainly taxpayer-financed fields, and we want to make sure who's using them, when, where, how, and that we all know that we're on the same page and we're on the same team. So any comments or questions from the board?
What you said about, we did a previous one with another Little League recently?
Well, as you may recall...
How does it dovetail?
No, it was about a month and a half ago. I proposed a contract with the Plymouth Canton Little League, which is represented here tonight by Mr. Holt, Jeffrey Holt, and there were objections raised at that time by the Greater Canton Youth Baseball League. So we all met, and we met in the intervening several weeks, and we worked out a three-way agreement, which everybody can understand and agree to, and it's going to work out well for everybody.
What was the biggest objection at that time, and what did we do to alleviate it?
What we did to alleviate it was to bring GCBYA onboard and delineate exactly the times of the year and the times of the week that they would be utilizing the fields. So it's a sharing agreement between the two parties.
I think the last time GCYBA had not heard about it until the day before, so they didn't really get a good idea of what was happening, so I think that, good job resolving.
So, yeah, it's resolved. All right, any other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? All righty, then I'm looking for a motion on this.
Mister Supervisor?
Mister Heitman?
I move to approve the Facility Use Agreement with Plymouth Canton Little League and Greater Canton Youth Baseball Softball Association for use of baseball diamonds at Township Park, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign same.
Thank you. Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for making this possible. We appreciate your time and effort. Play ball. All right. Item F4 is the Cathodic Protection System, and, Mr. Felrath, you're going to deliver that from there, or you want to come up to the podium? Make sure our cathodes are safe and protected, whatever that means.
Well, I'll have Dave Richman take the floor in just a second. Just a quick background, this item, I became aware of this item in the fall of last year or in the summer, when we had our annual tank inspection at the Five Mile Road tank.
The water, the big water tank behind the fire station?
Correct, the 1 million gallon water storage tank near Home Depot.
Oh, near Home Depot, okay, all right.
So this tank now is at an age around 11 years old, where a cathodic protection system is the practice to ins... system is the practice to install inside the tank, and the purpose of it is to prevent corrosion from occurring inside the tank. It's a steel tank, so it's subject to corrosion. A cathodic protection system is designed to, to prevent it or delay it. We have a system already in place at the Lake Point Tank, we've had it for, ever since I've been here, we've probably had it for decades. So this is a similar system, I asked Dave to go ahead and put bidding documents out and take it from there. So Dave, if you want to speak to it.
Okay, Dave.
So we, we put together bid documents, and we put it out on Mitten, and originally we did not get any responses back when we put it out on Mitten. Subsequently, we called then some, some other companies, and what we found out is that this, the installation of cathodic protection is typically done when they're painting a tank. So what you tend to find out is that there's a, it's painted, it's done through painting companies. So we reached out to a couple painting companies that have worked on tanks, and we received two bids from different painting companies, they're included in your packet. And our recommendation tonight would be to go to Seven Brothers, who was the actual, they were the lowest bid, they actually were the ones that also checked with Dixon Engineering, who had done the inspection on the tank, and they found out that if they, when they go in to weld some clips on the inside of the tank, there's a chance that there could be some paint, it could damage the paint on the exterior, so they have a, a price in there if they have to come back and do some touch-up painting. So our recommendation would be to go with Seven Brothers Painting to do the work, and what they do is, there's actually only really one company that does the actual cathodic protection, and that's a company called Corpro, but they won't contract the work themselves, they contract through a, like a painting company, because they'll have to come in, weld these clips on the inside, touch up the paint on the inside, and then come in and clean it, disinfect the tank before it's put back into service.
So you're saying the paint touch-up is on the inside and outside?
They, they will have to do some paint touch-up on the inside, and that's part of the, the normal price, but in case, through the, the course of welding, because of where they have to weld these clips on, there may be some damage to the exterior of the tank, and they'll come up and, and they'll touch up that paint as well if needed.
But even with the exterior spot painting?
They were still cheaper than the other company.
Four thousand less than the other one.
Any questions or comments from the board, or the public?
Budget, we've got it in the budget?
Yep. It's in the water budget. All right, ready for one?
Sure.
Motion? Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-03-26-35, to approve the award of the Five Mile Tank Cathodic Protection Installation to Seven Brothers Painting Inc. in the amount of $35,115.
Motion's been made by Trustee Kermy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next up is item F5, this is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with the TPOAM, this is the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association. We met in closed session back on March 5th to discuss this item in detail, and if there's any other comments or questions from the board, we do have also our labor attorney, John Clark, is with us tonight if he's needed also.
Do you want to do a quick summary of each one for the benefit of the public, or not necessary?
Uh, this, the TPOAM contract is a four-year contract with economic pay raises of 2.5% each year. There are also several policy adjustments, which were necessary and requested really by both sides regarding promotion, temporary assignments, seniority, and other things that both, both parties really wanted to clarify for the future. Those are really the, the major changes to that. We do have Sherry Parmelchuk here tonight, who is the, who was selected or drafted as the TPOAM president, and is happy that this is hopefully coming to an end. Any other comments or questions from the board?
And how many people in the, in this unit?
Uh, 19? 18. And these are all your clerical staff here at Township Hall and the Police Department as well.
So the most notable change will be a full day off on Good Friday.
Yeah, it does provide.
Be the most visible, that'll be the most visible.
It does provide for a full day off for Good Friday, yeah, and that would take effect this month, you know, right now, for this upcoming Holy Week season. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan for a term beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2022, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign same.
Motion's been made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is item F6, this is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers Local 214, which is affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters. The Teamsters represent our DPW employees, who are under the command of Director Felrath, and they work on the various water and sewer matters involving the township, and it impacts about nine employees. Similarly to the TPOAM contract, this agreement is a four-year agreement with annual pay raises of 2.5%. It also makes Good Friday a full holiday, and I believe we also provide for a, an additional vacation day for individuals who reach 20 years of service. Otherwise, it's, there's not very many other changes to this particular agreement, and we did also discuss this in closed session.
Do we plan on closing the office for everybody on Good Friday, then?
The offices will be closed on Good Friday all day for everyone but the emergency personnel.
Thank you.
And we'll make, we'll get that publicized in due time. So, any other comments or questions from the board or the public? Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers Local 214, affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, for a term beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2022, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign same.
Motion's been made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, this, next up is item F7, this is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with the POAM, this is the Police Officers Association of Michigan, representing our police patrol officers, which are approximately 20, 27 individuals?
30.
Well, it's all 30?
I'm sorry, the POAM is 26.
26, okay. This agreement is a five-year agreement with pay raises of 2, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, 3 and 3, and a minor increase in the longevity for both the relatively new hires, and doubling the longevity for the old hires, I don't, I know they don't like to be called that. We also have instituted some other policy changes, but otherwise, it's a, a pretty stable contract. And I think, Chief, would you, do you want to have any comments on this one?
No, I just wanted to, well, I better wait.
Later on?
After the vote.
Okay, all right. We do have representative here from the, from POAM as well, in, just in case. So, any other comments or questions from the board or the public? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heit, Mr. Vorva.
Okay. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers Association of Michigan, for police officers, for a term beginning January 1, 2019, ending December 31, 2023, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the same.
Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Clinton?
Yes.
Tre, I mean Treasurer Clinton, I apologize.
Yes, again.
Trustee Heitman?
He is 60.
Trustee?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yeah.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So next is item F8, this is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with the COAM, this is the Command Officers Association of Michigan. They represent the five sergeants, which serve in the Police Department. Their wages are tied to the, what, what the patrol officers get, it is basically a 16% differential between themselves and the patrol officers. That is really the, about the most substantive change here. The other change is that for individuals entering the bargaining unit, who are currently paying 10% on their, on their retirement benefits, they will continue to pay that 10%, and then they will also, those individuals will also receive the longevity bonus that they currently will be receiving in their police contract. So that is a way of incentivizing them as well, who are, those individuals who are continuing to pay the 10% for their, for their retirement benefit. Over time, over the life of this contract, we expect that the majority of the command officers will be, will be paying the 10% on their retirement benefits, which they currently are doing right now as patrolmen. I hope that made sense. But that's also another major change, otherwise, this is a, very much a status quo contract. Chief, nothing here on this one yet? You want to wait until after? Okay.
Does this, does this contract that's in the packet, does it spell out the annual salary increases, or does it just state that it's 16% above the patrol officer?
Yeah, we'll have Mr. Clerk answer that one.
The differential set forth in this contract, but it's tied in with the, with the POAM contract, so there's not, not specific dollar amounts in this contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's not included as a, as an addendum, once all that is worked out?
Um, we can certainly do that. I mean, we're only talking about one position, sergeant position, so.
Right.
We don't have multiple ranks in this, in this group, so.
Right.
But certainly, we can include that, if, if the board would like to have that, we can certainly include that as a final.
Well, say again about, we only have one in this group? What about the lieutenants?
No, they're all sergeants.
The lieutenants are not in any bargaining unit.
All right.
Now, we will, we will have to deal with their salaries later on, but it's a separate unit, and they're not represented by a union.
That's correct.
So, okay.
A question.
Thank you.
Have we reviewed these carefully to make sure there are no errors, and who is the person that is responsible for that?
Well, that's between myself and John Clark, and John's assistant, and the chief, so we've, we've gone through these pretty thoroughly.
All right, no surprises?
No surprises.
Is it, it has happened before?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sure.
It happens.
Sure does.
So, okay, any comments or questions from the board or the public? I need a motion on this item.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move the Board of Trustees approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Command Officers Association of Michigan for a term beginning January 1.
Motion's been made by, and ending, don't you have more?
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at a weird number. Beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2023, and authorizing the supervisor and clerk to sign same.
Thank you, motion's been made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yeah.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I don't want to jinx myself, but we might be out of here by 8 o'clock, that would be uh.
I have one question about.
Oh, no, 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 no.
He can't get off that easy.
No, 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 we, we have, no, we, we gotta, we're gonna, we're gonna go in order here, so it's, it's item G, Supervisor and Trustee comments.
No, I have a comment about what we're on.
Oh, you do?
We, we just finished.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we're moving into the fire contract, starting this week, correct?
Yes.
And, we're going, I hope, or urge you to use these as a patterning agreement. I know that will be challenging, and when is the start? Is it tomorrow?
Actually, Friday is our first meeting with the Fire Department, Fire Union. And, you know, they, every, in, in collective bargaining, especially with public safety unions, everybody's always watching what, what is going on with the other bargaining units, and we've certainly created some precedent here tonight, so.
I'll have one item, I'll email it to you to include. I talked to you about it before, but it's a small one.
Okay. Chief?
Yes, I, I just want to thank the board for your professional approach at settling these contracts. You took the time and effort to look at and, and really understand the contract, to look at comparables, you place the value on the employees, which perhaps is the most important asset that the township has, are, are our employees and the service that they provide to the, to the township. I believe this contract places our employees not at the top of the spectrum of the comparables, but somewhere near the middle. And I, I'd like to thank all of you for, it was very refreshing to work with you and to settle this contract quickly with the unions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And I, I think, just to reiterate, one of the things that we all sought in this contract is, especially with the police units, is attracting and retaining quality people, and that's really across the board. It's, it's, the, the problem is very acute right now in this country for individuals who are looking to serve in, in the police or fire departments. There was a time, I think Mr. Vorva can attest, when you were a police officer, that when there was a, an opening, you'd have, you could have, what, 50?
Oh, hundreds.
Hundreds of applicants, and.
And they hired you?
Yeah.
I slipped through.
He was the only one to ride a horse.
And shoot straight at Sam.
So.
Did we say that?
Yes. Uh, so it is, it is a challenge nowadays, though, to attract and retain good people, especially in the public safety, but that is also true in, in the DPW world and in the clerical world, because we have very low unemployment right now in this country, and people, workers have the ability to move around and, and pick and choose like never before, so we have to be more competitive as well. All right, item G is Supervisor and Trustee comments. I've already said a little bit tonight about the, the contract negotiations that have taken place, and we do have one more contract that we have to begin negotiations on, and that is the Fire Union contract. The Fire Union contract expires at the end of March, so we are, we are certainly on schedule with them, and negotiations will begin on Friday. The only other bargaining unit in the township is the Dispatchers Union, and their contract expires at the end of this year, so we have a little bit more time with them, and we have more time to focus on the Fire, Fire Department. But when you look back at these last four votes here tonight, this is, this is another example of what culture change looks like in Plymouth Township. And we get that question a lot, what is culture change? What does that look like? How do you define that? This is a very concrete example of that tonight. As the chief mentioned, this is very unusual to have four of the largest contracts in the township settled, in, really in the span of a few months, with very little acrimony, a lot of understanding between labor and management, and it's really built on, it's built on professionalism, mutual respect, and trust, and that has been sorely lacking around here for many years. So I, I think that it's a, a testament to the, our ability as a board, and our staff, and our department heads to work together for the benefit of the public, and to make sure that our hard-working employees are taken care of and, and rewarded for their service to the township. We are a very lean operation here. If you look up at Canton, or you look at, to Northville, you will see that they have a lot more staff doing the same thing, and we do it all for a lot fewer people, and our folks work very hard as a result. So we appreciate you, and we applaud you for your service, and we look forward to several more years of working with you under these new agreements. Okay, Bob? Harry? Harry?
One quick thing, looks like General Drive is moving ahead, and we've got more than fifty percent of the signatures of the companies on General Drive for the repaving effort, and Absapure signed last Friday, which was great news, and all that is coming into the township, so.
Okay, that sounds good. Jerry Vorva?
And as you recall, we received a five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollar grant to help with that project, so thanks to former state rep Jeff Noble. What year will it be done in? Twenty twenty?
That's the goal, yeah.
That's the goal, yeah.
I mean, if we have to go over, we'll just get, we can get, boys get permission from the state, as long as we're showing substantial progress and interest, I doubt that the state is going to take our money away. Mark?
All set, thank you.
Okay, Chuck?
Rouge Rescue, are we planning an event?
Well, last year, you remember, we did the cleanup of Tonkish Creek between Ann Arbor Road and Joy Road, well, that was pretty well-received, we, we filled up just almost a whole dumpster full of debris. This year, though, we're, we're keeping an eye on the, on that portion of the, of the creek, but it does not appear to be as dirty just after one year. What we'll probably do is partner with Friends of the Rouge and other volunteer groups in the community on some riparian, what we would call riparian corridor management projects at Township Park. We do have a rain garden that Friends of the Rouge is going to be building at Township Park this year, next to the, the big pavilion, and we're looking for volunteers to help us seed it and, and beautify that, make sure that that's fully functional, and that will more than likely be our, our primary Rouge Rescue project.
But that'll be, that'll be in the fall.
Yeah, but Friends of the Rouge now doesn't, they're not as fixated anymore on a particular date, so if, if individuals come to us, or community groups who want to be involved in a Rouge Rescue Day project, we can certainly direct them to other opportunities, most likely in Heinz Park that would exist, but if, for our, our own local project, it will more than likely be the rain garden, and then some other plantings over at Township Park.
Is there any update on the bridges in Heinz?
The latest on the bridges on Heinz is that they're, they are to be reopened no later than July 1st.
So they're doing some type of structural support, not a rebuild?
I, I think what they'll do is a structural support, and then they will rebuild them at some point in the future.
Golf course?
Yeah.
The golf course committee had some findings, they presented them here. I'd like those to be given to the new operators, so at least they can mine some of the ideas, maybe, who knows, so that there, there's some feeling that, you know, we added some value. And the next item, this may be a long-term planning thing, is changing the entrance to Ann Arbor Road, which will, Ann Arbor Trail, which will take some work, but that was one of the big recommendations in there, and we should start working on it, it used to be the entrance, and we undid it, maybe now we need to redo it again, but it will be a challenge.
Yeah, I would be open to that, but I know that there's been concerns raised by the neighbors across the street, and then there's also some traffic and line-of-sight issues that I know have been raised by individuals as well.
But the traffic, getting out on Beck Road-
Oh, I know.
Is worse than getting out on Ann Arbor Trail, you cannot, it's impossible to make a left turn in certain times of the day going south on Beck Road.
I thought they, there's not a curb, legal curb cut there anymore, is there?
At Beck and-
No, off at-
No, it's all been sealed off and sodded and everything, so, okay, all set?
Yep.
Very good, any comments or questions from the public? This is item H. Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman?
I move we adjourn at-
Motion's been made by trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by clerk Vorva, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.